I will call a meeting to order of Tuesday, March 15. It is a meeting between the council and our directors, and it's an environmental scan and organizational profile with Craig Rapp to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're finally all gathered to do strategic planning. It seems like a long time ago when we first started to discuss the process, and a lot has happened since. It has been really helpful for me to zoom out to the 30,000-foot level and review the data, staff's assessment, and community's input. I hope it will be helpful to you as well in putting together a roadmap for the next three years. Thanks to the community for their feedback. We received over 600 surveys, which far outpaced our consultants' goals. Also, thanks to the leadership team for their insight and presentations tonight. Special thanks to Communications Manager Ruland and Management Analyst Swanson for overseeing the engagement and putting together tonight's presentation. Between, just between us, Neil said he was not going to look at it one more time. Analyst Swanson will present the first slides, and he will also have the presentation up. And so when you're making your presentations, you can let him know when to change the slides. So with that, I hand it over to you, Analyst Swanson.
All right, can everyone hear and see me? I just lost everybody. That's fine. Um, let's see. Are we good? Can I get a yes?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, wonderful. So, Mayor, Council, thank you so much for having me here to sort of lead the intro into this process. What we're at is basically, we're going to go over the city's environmental scan and organizational profile. So to start out, environmental scan is the beginning stage of a strategic plan process. It really focuses on the external factors that are impacting our operations and our community. So demographics, opportunity challenges, those items. So in your prior presentation, the presentation I sent you last week, we had a bunch of data available to, that I've pulled together over the last couple of weeks that really kind of lays out the specifics in what we're seeing, like demographics in our community. I just pulled a quick snapshot because we don't need an extra 10 slides in this presentation. I'll go through them really quickly. Feel free to jump in anytime if you have any questions. Feel free to just say something because I lost everybody, so I won't be able to see it. So we're a diverse community of 36,994 residents. We have 41% of our residents identify as BIPOC. We're getting more diverse. English is not a primary language spoken at home for 24.4% of our residents. Something really cool that I found is that's actually higher than Minneapolis. So we are more diverse than Minneapolis in that aspect. We're younger than our neighbors, median age is 35.7 years. We are increasingly educated. 42% of our residents have at least a bachelor's. And our median income is growing. It's at $66,908 right now. 13.6% of our population is living with a disability. Our primary makeup is single-family home and apartments. A proportion of our rental-occupied homes have been increasing over the last decade, and the median sales price of a home in Richfield in 2021 was $321,000. We've seen a five-year increase in home prices of 45%. The median rent in 2019 was $1,079. We've seen a five-year increase in rental prices in Richfield of 28%. So that's a quick summary of who we are in our community. I have all the more detailed information at the end of this presentation, but I figured I'd just kind of run through it quickly, and we can ask any additional minutia questions later on if we have those. What an organizational profile is, is a snapshot of the organization that operates within that community environment. So it's really focused on the internal factors affecting the operation environment. So it's very similar to what we just went through, more just for the organization. Just sort of an intro to that. This is the mission, vision, value, and core values that council set late last year. I think this really dictates how our organization is moving forward and kind of will help us decide as we go through this process what's important and what may not be. At that, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez, as you can sure break down the city operations by numbers.
Thank you. Yeah, I really enjoyed the process that Manager Ruland led on refreshing our mission, vision, and values. And what struck me is the fact that there, and even with the community feedback with this process, there's a lot of shared values, and there's a lot of pride in Richfield. So it's nice to be part of that organization. The next slide demonstrates that as a medium-sized suburb, we are a complex organization. And as Craig likes to say, the council and the administration is kind of like a holding company for some very, very different operations. And if you go to the next slide. Oh, this one, yep, thanks. These are some of the programs that are really unique for Richfield. They are very rooted in our values, and I believe help our community thrive. And it's not an exhaustive list, but it does demonstrate the level of service and the community investment. And now I'll turn it over to Assistant Manager Tongban and Human Resources Manager Guzman, and they will introduce the administrative services slides.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. My name is Satong Ban. I'm the Assistant City Manager for Richfield. I'm also the Administrative Services Director, and I manage the Deputy Register, which includes the DMV, City Clerk, Communications, Information Technology, Building Services, and Human Resources. Just due to the limited time that we have on the presentation for Misstress Services, we're going to focus on information technology and human resources. We'll go up first with the slide with human resources. So I'll hand this over to Human Resources Andrew.
All right, thank you, everybody, for having me. Appreciate being here again. I'm HR Manager Krista Guzman. As you can see, I will start out with the city employees at a glance, some of our trends from the last engagement surveys that we have sent out to our employees. You'll see some similar trends across the board, including overall employee work satisfaction. You will see, obviously, an increase in employee dissatisfaction, and that is sort of a similar trend that we're seeing across employers, you know, really nationwide. The results concluded that in a Gallagher survey recently, employees aren't as happy with work as they once were, and burnout is having a major impact on morale and likely engagement at many organizations similar to ours. So you'll see also the top trends for employee survey listed within this slide, increasing employee accountability and continuing to develop our employees and their skills, improving recognition, and then providing some more staff training. So all areas that we're working on within HR. And we'll go to the next slide here, just to provide you an overview of all of our full-time budgeted staff, so you have an overall picture. You can see how that has changed throughout the years. The last two years here, we've stayed the same at 202 full-time staff. So you can go to the next slide. And then overall, probably the biggest meat of my presentation is really focusing on the change in the labor force. And really, we're calling that sort of, across the field, the great resignation. So overall, we're seeing in our workforce, you can see in the graph, just the large percentage, it's actually 42% of our city's workforce have under five years of service. So we're seeing a large separation rate in local government across the board, as well as just overall in the Midwest. So for HR, some of the trends are to increase our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then how do we see that playing out in our hiring processes? Of course, COVID has been a challenge across HR and capacity and continuing to change with the pandemic and the needs that that demands with organizations. And then that also has put another increase for us being reliant on technology. And we're seeing that, of course, employees are demanding that, as well as they're joining organizations with, you know, chances to continue remote work as an ongoing demand from some of our newer workforce employees. So again, that presents both challenges and opportunities. In the next slide here, you'll also see that we have seen some separations across different departments in the city, and you'll see averages at the bottom. So from 2020 to 2021, we did see an increase in our turnover rates with full-time employees. And then you will see that comparison with local government, as well as the Midwest. So for 2021, seeing that 15% turnover rate. From the next slide, focusing some more on opportunities and challenges. Some of the biggest opportunities, again, that I think is really the main meat of my presentation, is to continue to attract and retain top talent in really a challenging labor market. So we're seeing, again, movement across all levels in the workforce. We're seeing employees who are requesting additional things when we offer them positions like more flexibility, more sick time, more vacation, more pay. And then we're also trying to stay competitive within the market, competing with other employers who are able to offer sometimes higher wages, and especially in lower-level positions. We're seeing just the demand for labor across many different sectors is so high right now. We aren't seeing as many applications as we previously had, but we still have the same commitment to continue to reflect the diversity of the community. And we also want to make sure that we're developing our employees and promoting our diverse staff to those higher-level management positions. So with that, all that said, and that's a lot of demands on HR and staff. And so we have to continue to be flexible to how we can provide those needs with just the limited staff that we have available. And then also, how do we continue to partner with the community so that we provide the best services and sort of tell our stories of why it's such a great place to work here at the city of Richfield? So needs within HR, again, how do we evaluate our staffing need, looking at the priorities that we have as a city? And then how do we continue to diversify our workforce? You'll see in the graph that we have provided some information on how our workforce has changed in some of our departments over the years in terms of our BIPOC employees and just the differences across our departments. Again, we want to continue to create partnerships within our community. So how do we tell the story of our positions? How do we promote applicants to apply that maybe haven't before? And how do we continue to be creative in the positions that we offer? And I think the last slide here that I have just gives you an overall picture of the staff-reported race and ethnicity for the last year in comparison to the community survey or summary. So you can see how we compare within the community. Right now, the city staff is, let's see, 17% BIPOC employees overall. But we have seen an increase in that over the years, which is awesome to see, and I continue to hope to see in the future as well. So with that, I think I'll pass it back to Assistant City Manager Tongban for the next slides.
Thank you, Manager Guzman. And the next department I'm going to focus on is information technology and talk about the trends that's happening within Richfield, but also across cities across Minnesota. Is just the heavy reliance on IT during the pandemic. As you can see, most cities were closed. Some cities were closed, some cities were open, some cities had hybrids. But one of the demands was trying to get employees to work off-site on home. And that includes technology upgrades, and then also the growing demands for the latest technology across all industries. And then part of that is the cost of technology increasing. Fortunately, that the city of Richfield did have care funding that supported that. And then with that, you also have the concerns with cybersecurity and the growing threat within the organization, especially when we're coming back now, when staff is used to working off-site and having that ability to work either on a hybrid model or a flex model. And then also having the residents, the like, because of the pandemic, their reliance on being connected now and access to services and paying online, just from the pandemic and also the demands from the residents wanting a different model to provide the city services. So next slide. The opportunities and challenges, again, trying to continue to support a workplace flexibility, keeping our IT and AV systems up to date in a growing financial need, then also increased access mean increased security exposure. One of the things that kind of, like Manager Guzman mentioned in terms of the great resignation, one of the things that IT across the board, the IT industry is happening, is that recruiters are seeing that when companies large, like Target, Best Buy, or when they bring their staff back, they're the first people to go out there and start recruiting these individuals, saying, hey, we have a, you can work from 100% from home. Here's more pay. So there's a lot of demand for that and a lot of demand for their services. And when they can work from home, it provides an ideal work-life balance for them. So that's a huge concern for the city in terms of recruitment and retention. Next slide first. So then one of the needs for IT, especially for Richfield, is the immediate need for qualified staff. We have a very small staff here in Richfield. We're down a network manager and a help desk staff member, so that accounts for about 40% of our staff. Another needs is sustaining funding to keep IT and AV systems up to date. And then also increasing funding for more system maintenance and upgrades. And then the last item of the needs, that's very important, especially for Richfield right now, is the funding for training both IT and general staff on new technology. We're looking at various aspects of different departments, and there's software that we're looking across the board for the city, but also that specializes in each department. And we just want to make sure that, one, that they communicate and, or that they communicate with each other. And two, when we do take a look at different softwares within the city, is that we make sure that there's enough backup, there's enough storage capacity within the city, because most of the software now is no longer backed up hard. Hard, it's usually through, usually through a cloud service. So of course, with the cloud service, of course, with that, there is an enormous cost to that in terms of storage and backup. And when you take a look at different files, different systems, that's going to be a huge impact for the city, not only for storage, but for training to make sure that we're consistent with our storage capacity. So I'll pass it on to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you. So until we hire a finance manager, I'll represent the finance department. Some of the slides I'm going to go over pretty quickly. This one, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on, because it's an outside, external review of our finances and the city's fiscal health. We have a strong rating, AA+, and that's especially given our modest tax base. The agency rated our location in the metro region as a positive, as well as the city's strong cash reserves and budget flexibility. It rated the city only adequate on the 2019 budget performance and our increasing debt load. We did have stronger performance in 2020, thanks to the CARES funding. We have yet to finalize 2021, but the general fund is in the black in our initial reports. Staff will need to make all year-end accruals before we know if we need to transfer any funding from reserves. We had budgeted an almost $500,000 transfer. Next slide, please. Our tax base is primarily residential, and it's been steadily growing, which is very good news. It's mostly thanks to the many redevelopment projects and continued market value increases. Next slide. The growing tax base has allowed tax rates to fall until 2020, when they started to creep up again. Next slide. The city has added considerable debt since 2011 to finance infrastructure improvements. So this is like a good news story, too, because we have invested in our infrastructure recently, which is positive. Next slide. The average general fund increases have been about 4%, but that has also crept up in recent years. Personnel costs are over 70% of our general fund budget, and we have added eight full-time staff since 2018. The tight labor market is also putting pressure on the annual budget. Next slide. Richfield's levy per capita is high compared to peer cities. Remember that slide that I provided? It's a summary of all those innovative programs that invest in our community. Many of them are unique to Richfield. And while I believe they help our community thrive, they also require additional funding. Next slide, please. So this is our debt per capita, and that's also adds to our higher levy and is higher than our peer cities on a per capita basis. Next slide. And finally, this is how our tax rate compares to other cities. Because our tax base is mostly residential and market values are not high-end, you know, it's expected that our tax rate would be higher, but it is something to monitor. Analyst Swan, oh, sorry, next slide. Analyst Swanson did some great research on the impact to our local government aid funding when the larger TIPS decertify in 2025. And although it's still an estimate, because it's a complicated formula, and it's a statewide formula, we should budget to lose about $370,000 to $400,000 each year after those TIPS decertify for a final impact of about $1 million less in LGA funding. The program does limit how much cities can lose, will lose annually. They have a circuit breaker if there's a significant change in the tax base. It's still good news, because we're going to get more, we're going to add more to our tax base with the TIPS decertifying. Then we will lose an LGA. And also, and this is much more importantly, having a bigger tax base is much more a stable source of revenue. It's likely that that one year, when we add the value as those TIPS roll off, that the tax rate would go down. Still, the next five years are going to be challenging, like I said, and Manager Guzman remarked on, there is, we predict a tight labor market going forward. That puts pressure on the budget. Some revenues are still down, and there's planned infrastructure projects, the 65th Street project, and also a new Wood Lake Nature Center building. And that's on top of already considerable debt load. So if you can go to the next slide, Chris. So I just put together some scenarios for the next five years, just to, so you can understand what your options are going forward. These are the major levers that you have when you're setting your budget and your levy. And 70% of the levy is, 70% of the general fund, the revenues is the levy. Personnel is over 70%. And then you've got your capital needs, leave, capital needs, sorry. Also, our reserves and ARPA are healthy, but that's limited. So if you can go to the next slide, Chris. The first scenario slightly bends down the cost curve for the general fund to 4.5%, and it covers the budget gap with the levy. It does not add a new Wood Lake Nature Center building. The average annual increase would be a 6.2% levy. If you kept levy increases closer to 5%, then you would have about a $500,000 budget gap. If we bend down the budget increases after a couple of years, you know, again, predicting that we're going to have a tight labor market. And in year five, you're down to 3.25%, which would be an average each year of 3.7%. You also push the roadway projects out to 2028 to be able to fund a new Wood Lake Nature Center building. We would still have a deficit with that scenario if you kept it at a 5% increase. If you went to a 5.25% increase on average, then you'd have a more manageable deficit. So I just, I wanted to show you all of these to see, so you could see that we are fiscally constrained in our options going forward. I also wanted to, if you look at that last scenario, to make it, to bring it down to the homeowner level, it's about $100, $150 each year for the average value home. Now, that is a best guess at this point, because it's going to depend on how residential market gains are compared to apartment and commercial property. So, but that's just a best guess of what it would look like. The good news is we do have healthy reserves in ARPA, but that's one-time money, and it would be best used to invest in upgrades to lower our overall budget increases in the future. I did pull together some questions to ponder as we go through strategic planning. Thanks, Chris. Yep, go to the next one, yep. Thank you.
Can we interrupt with questions, or do you not want us to?
Sure, that's up to you and the mayor, if you guys want to wait till questions till the end, or if you want to interrupt as we go along. I know I threw a lot of finance information at you.
I think if we can interrupt, that would be fine, because it's relevant to the material that you're presenting, but then just trying to keep it limited and having the discussion so we can get through the presentation. So go ahead, Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a clarifying question. Is it, I think if I'm reading between the lines, it's not really relevant to consider options with a no and then a yes, or a yes and then a no, that the roadway debt and the Wood Lake Nature Center debt sort of cancel each other out?
So again, we're not putting together a budget tonight, so you don't have to make these decisions. I just wanted to have you to have an idea of what you can afford as we go through and discuss strategic planning. And this was my best effort to do that. But no, I mean, you can, these levers, you can pull or not pull. We would just have to let you know, again, if you said, yes, we want to not defer the roadway funding, and we want to do Wood Lake Nature Center, then you're going to have a much bigger general fund gap, because you're going to have that much more debt service. But yes, we can have different scenarios that we would explore going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the finance?
I also had a question. With the roadway debt, are you also including if we have to cost participation with the county on Penn and Nicollet? Because I'm thinking those are probably coming up. Is that in here at all, or are we only doing what's currently on the board?
No, well, with the scenario of pushing it off to 2028, I had those projects in 2029. You do start to roll off debt in 2029, and then it's pretty constant, but debt is rolling off after that. So these next seven-ish years are tough. All right. So these are the trends for both the finance department and then for the organization as a whole. The economic uncertainty, I feel like, has become more uncertain recently. I heard today that economists are starting to put the chance of a recession at 50/50. Next slide, please. Finance is one of the departments that's been hard-hit by turnover. We did try to make lemonade out of lemons, and we hired ABDO to document all the positions, look for process improvements. Most of the improvements we're not going to be able to make until we can get fully staffed in the department, and we'll also begin to do some more cross-training. And the good news also on this is we're interviewing for the finance position, finance manager position this week. Next slide, please. I've already discussed the most urgent needs for the finance department for the organization. I believe that we need a 10-year fiscal plan. And that is it for the finance presentation, unless there's more questions.
I can't see everybody, so please just speak up, Council, if you have additional questions for finance. Otherwise, we can keep moving. Okay, sounds like I don't have any other questions. Go ahead.
So I'll pass it to Community Development Director Palman.
All right, thanks, Katie. So trends that are on CD's radar. I don't think there'll be a lot of surprises here. We're an increasingly diverse community. We've gone over the statistics, and I don't need to belabor that. But as we become a less homogenous community, we need to reevaluate the ways that we do business. You know, different households have different needs. There are different service needs, different housing needs, a desire for different amenities. We need to be thinking about that, continuing to think about that. There's a strong housing market now. A lot of housing development is expected in the coming years. We've got five developments that are in progress right now. And as a fully-developed community, you know, this isn't going to be single-family development. It's going to continue to be large-scale redevelopment. There is still the housing shortage. There is still the housing shortage and an affordability problem. This is a nationwide problem, not a rich field problem. We need to think about ways that we can be effective here at the local level. Um, and also just be cognizant of the fact that there are things that are bigger than us. Um, and really, really focus on what we can do. There's a lot of uncertainty in the retail and office market. Um, before the pandemic, online sales were exceeding brick and mortar sales. And yet, commercial and office space are really important to our community. They're, they provide jobs, services, a diversified tax base. So we need to be thinking about ways that we can support and continue to encourage that type of development in rich field despite these other factors. Uh, transportation changes, we all recognize that transportation is changing and we need to adapt, just trying to figure out how we adapt, how quickly we adapt, um, what those adaptations look like. And then our changing workforce, HR talked about um some of the broader trends, so I won't. But um in CD, we are struggling in trades-related positions. We have known for years that kids were not going into the trades. And while if kids aren't going into the trades, then you don't have people move out of the trades and into inspections. Um, you know, if you're a plumber making two hundred dollars an hour and making your own hours, why would you come to work for us? And then can we move to the next slide? So opportunities and challenges, I've combined this slide because most of the items represent both an opportunity and a challenge for us. Um, our diverse population, how do we prioritize uh the needs of these diverse communities when we have limited resources? We need to um be thinking about the greatest good for the greatest number. Um, because we, we do not have unlimited resources. Richfield has become a really desirable place to live. Um, our decade of development has really paid off, but that desirability presents different challenges like affordability and displacement and fears of losing the things that make Richfield, Richfield, um, our sense of identity. So we need to focus on how we provide new housing and new housing choices, like the missing middle housing that we're working on within the context of um the urban hometown that people love so much. Small business assistance, um, we have some beloved institutions here in Richfield. We need to, um, sorry, I'm back on up, yeah. Um, think about how we support those businesses while also supporting reinvestment and redevelopment of blighted sites. Um, especially given the, our immigrant populations, I think, I think John has talked with you about this in the past, but the fact that immigrants are eighty percent more likely to start a business than someone who was born in the US. We need to look for ways to support small business and the entrepreneurs in our community. Climate change, sustainability, transportation changes, these are all really big things um for everyone. So again, how do we adjust and plan? How do we encourage sustainable design without driving costs higher in short term and challenging affordability? Um, transportation is changing, but how fast is it changing and how much? You know, how do we plan for this in the interim? When, do we reduce our parking standards now and increase uh discomfort in our neighborhoods with street parking and issues with plowing? And how do we bring our community along and have those discussions? And then staff fatigue, this is a real thing. There is so much work to be done, you'll see in this presentation from all of us. Um, and that, this, a lot of this work is on top of our core services. We all realize there's a lot of work to do, be done, but it takes a lot of headspace. It takes um strong relationships and it takes trust to do the work and staff is exhausted. Their mental and physical health is suffering. I can't ask them to do more. I can ask them to reprioritize, but I, I can't add things to their plate. And then um technology limitations, I think that there are major opportunities to improve technology in um community development, we need to make uh significant investments in plan review and permitting systems. Um, and that will help us keep up with the work now, but it will also help us to plan for the future when we're likely to continue to experience um the worker shortages, especially in the trades. You can move to the next one, thanks. So I'm fully staffed, uh, we're still two and a half positions down in community development. But the bigger story for us is that fifty percent of community development is in a different job than they were at the beginning of COVID. So ten of the twenty employees that work in community development were not in the job that they're in now, two years ago. So we need to be fully staffed, fully trained, fully acclimated. We need to get to know one another, we need to know the processes under which um we're working. And we need to do that outside of the fire drill that we've been having for two years. Um, technology, infrastructure, I just talked about it, but we were behind before COVID. And with COVID and the building boom, we had, our needs have dramatically intensified. Again, the most urgent is for that plan review software and the hardware that goes with it for our inspections teams. Affordable housing, this is one of those bigger-than-richfield issues, but I want to call it your attention. You know, affordable housing needs financing, it doesn't just need gap funding. And those resources are really scarce, so we will continue to work to provide as much as we can. But we're unsure of how we're going to meet um your goals and the goals of the Met Council if we can't get a tax project, tax credit project funded. You know, we need those outside resources to pool with our own. And then long-term HRA and CD stability, funding stability. You know, this is going to be a challenge for us as, as Katie mentioned, those large TIF districts start to roll off. A number of our programs are funded through pooled TIF. And the administrative funds from those districts fund the administration, they fund our staff that's running the programs. So as we start to see the districts roll off, we're going to need to reconsider how we pay for those programs and the staff that administer them. And um, you know, we've got some new districts coming online, but TIF is variable and it's delayed. So those new districts aren't producing um a great amount of increment for several years. And in the meantime, we'll, we'll need to keep those projects running, or we'd like to keep those projects running. And then permit revenues and, and permits, you can see that our permits um have been going up. But eventually, this market um w- will, will stabilize or will not be so hot. And um, we need to take advantage of these larger revenues right now and invest them in technology that's gonna carry us through um leaner times. And that, that's it from CD, unless there are questions.
Any CD questions from council? Council member Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks for the presentation and I just had one question that we might not know the answer to uh right away, but I know we have this outstanding litigation that uh began back when we had a different mayor and we had a different city manager, we had a different um um uh, community development director. So I just wondered if uh, I know there's been some communication made to kind of feed on that, but I wondered if you had an update on that and some of the funding, just the need for TIF and the things that the lawsuit might create some, some opportunities for us.
Thanks, council member Chapman, that's a good question. We have been talking about that internally, um, staff's been getting up to speed um, and trying to figure out exactly what is happening with that lawsuit. We're, we're planning to provide a memo to council in the near future about our recommendations for moving forward. I will tell you that um there is no um indication now that the result of that lawsuit would um result in any type of money, any funding.
Okay, good enough.
Other questions for CD? Okay, we can move um onto the next one.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council members and, and other staff. Um, in the fire department, uh, the, the second two bullet points really have already been covered by both community development and uh by city manager Rodriguez's uh comments. With the growing tax base as well as the population density increasing, uh, the needs for the, the firefighting within the community's building sack are changing. And that's something that, you know, as we're seeing the lightweight construction, five-story stick buildings kind of come into place. We are certainly uh adapting our tactics to, to manage that. Um, we are, our calls are increasing. We will probably hit five thousand calls by twenty twenty five, which is not that far down. Um, and obviously, these buildings are higher risk and have a bigger value. We're also seeing an increase in mental health calls as well as those that are underinsured and carry no insurance as well. Next slide, please. So like I mentioned, the calls continuing to increase, um, this obviously puts stress on staff. Uh, one-third of our calls uh in twenty twenty one uh were overnight calls uh between eight PM and eight AM, which means about four and a half times a night, our fire crews were out uh managing somebody else's problem. Uh, and that's having a direct impact, uh, like director Paleman said, on our staff. Everybody is tired and we continue to be very busy. Um, one of the things that city manager Rodriguez has, has allowed us to do is uh, we'll have a uh pilot project uh in twenty twenty two with the addition of the three firefighters that were just hired. We have those firefighters now on shift and one of our shifts will actually have nine people on it instead of our normal eight. Our minimum staffing has always been six, uh, but with this nine-person shift, we now will have seven on a, on, on that shift as our minimum. And our hope is to show that we can save actually overtime uh by utilizing those firefighters uh i- in those positions. Obviously, uh, like I mentioned, the lightweight construction, uh, we're training, obviously, to, to make sure we're meeting the demands of the city. And then obviously, like everybody's already mentioned, the need for technology, uh, we have a heavy dependence now on technology. Uh, we'll be moving into new technology with our CAD replacement uh project uh with dispatch. So a lot of things happening and, and we certainly do need to stay current with our technology. Uh, the next slide, please. So as the calls for service continue to escalate, we wanna make sure that we're continuing to provide exceptional service. We are be, we are looking at our staffing needs uh with the pilot program that we started actually just on Sunday. Are, like Melissa said, uh, there is significant uh mental health issues attributed to people's uh lack of sleep. And one of the things we're trying to do is make sure that we're managing those within the fire department uh and trying to get people that, that break. That's one of the hopes that we're uh with the staffing pilot that we're trying to, to see if we can actually measure the need for additional resources on their days off. And again, just technology, you're gonna hear that over and over again, I believe, this evening, so uh, with that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you, Chief Dobish, go ahead, council member Waylon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think we discussed at, maybe it was one of the fall sessions or a different check-in. Um, is it still, I trust your judgment and am not an expert at all, but is it still a possibility to move away from the twenty-four-hour shifts and would that help with some of the, as calls increase, getting, just getting to sleep? Um, or is that not a viable option?
So uh, we can, the, the shorter answer is uh, the only way to do that is to increase our staffing by about twenty-five percent. Uh, and that doesn't necessarily solve the problem. Um, all it does is it shifts the problem to those that are working the overnights. So um, we can certainly continue to evaluate that. One of the things uh we're hoping to do with this pilot is to show just the reduced need for multiple units to be going on calls uh overnight hours. Right now, Rescue One is backing up Engine Two on the west side of town. And our hope is to show that with three people on Engine Two, we don't have to do that as often, which allows Rescue One to stay in quarters and, and sleep with our stationary learning system. Uh, units are identified by unit, not everybody has to wake up, so that our hope is that we can maximize the, the time that firefighters are asleep and minimize the interruptions going back and forth.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
I'm just a question about medical calls, I'm just curious, I know it's kind of a common and it's been mentioned that it's a growing issue, is there any like state law change or anything that would possibly make that less of the local fire department's responsibility? Because it seems like things that the private sector should be taking care of, like it's responding to things at a senior home or whatever, end up falling to the public sector and it isn't really fair to your firefighters or our city budget, even though people need services.
I, actually, I think probably just the opposite, uh, council member Heyford O'Leary. Uh, I think one of the things that we're probably gonna see um uh is a community EMT program where uh the health systems help augment staffing so that some of those uh communities that need s- need support, need staffing, uh, we can actually get out and preventively get into the, those communities uh and prevent them from accessing the most expensive part of the healthcare system, which is the emergency department. So with any luck, that's one of the things that, that we're looking at uh and just trying to figure out how to navigate that, uh, it's, it's all, everything is new right now as, as all of this is unfolding. Um, but that's one of the potential solutions.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, uh, so basically creating a new specialty or a different class of employee that we don't currently have or don't have enough of to handle those situations or?
So actually, it may be additional staffing, uh, but all of our firefighters are EMTs, uh, and community EMT is uh, it's just an additional certification along with the, the basic EMT certification. And that allows people to go out proactively, work with um medicine reconciliation, uh, making sure the home is safe, no slip-trip hazards within the home. Some of the basic things that would help keep people out of the emergency department.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from council? Okay, looks like we can go to the next section.
All right, Mayor and Council, um, Director Fillmore was unable to be here, so I'm just gonna go over his slides um for the presentation. Um, so, sales have never been higher for liquor operations, uh, I've graphed that on the included uh chart. Um, customer dema- demographics are changing, as many of the departments have already mentioned. Um, that also means that there's a changing market and sales are kind of becoming more diverse. So items that uh we haven't carried are now being requested. Um, customers are more interested in the shopping experience and access. Uh, I'll kind of go a little bit more detail on the next slide about that. Um, it's a tight labor market for retail, uh, that's particularly with staffing, it's very hard to get employees right now. Um, liquor has seen a number of issues with supply and distribution uh during COVID nineteen, as, as many other retail carriers and the city generally. Um, and there's just a continued pressure at the state level to offer beer and wine um in grocery stores and gas stations. Good stuff. Um, so kind of in more in-depth about the changing customer base, we still have really good customer loyalty here in Richfield. Um, but customers are trying to look for the new thing, so they want that high-end beer, they want that very um specific type of whiskey. Kind of those more specific items that are somewhat harder to carry. Um, we're also seeing a more diverse customer base, so more need for Spanish-speaking employees and employees who more reflect the community. Um, and then also customers want easy access, so they're looking for more events, wine education, specific tastings, little beer event things, stuff like that. And staff is also to kind of be in line with that, are starting to need more education, um, so they can have, can answer questions of, of our uh customers there. Um, there's also more um opportunities for partnering with local restaurants. And one of the things that um I think they continue here at the liquor stores is they want, customer wants delivery options. Sort of here's the needs, uh, I, as you'll hear multiple times in this presentation, staffing. Liquor store, liquor operations currently has a really high level of in- internal retention and recruitment. Uh, but they are seeing a um shortage of workers through COVID nineteen and into the Great Resurrection. Um, they have a lot of managers that are spending a lot of time working actually at the stores as opposed to actually focusing on staff development and their development. And they just wanna make sure that they have a succession planning in place, um, so that as, you know, people start to retire or leave, that none of the liquor operations is impacted. Um, there's some sure general building infrastructure and techs that they also have needs, so buildings are getting older, just general needs to upkeep those. Um, and our point-of-sale system was older, we're looking at upgrading that right now. Also, there's just increased in uh need for direct engagement with customers, uh, particularly Also, there's just increased in need for direct engagement with customers, particularly with the social media presence. And I will turn it over to the chief now.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate it. Good evening. First and foremost, I just want to talk about a slide earlier in the presentation. That City Manager Rodriguez brought up about Bloomington Public Health J C P P. And also our embedded social worker, obviously, we've been with Bloomington Public Health for close to forty years. And the resources that provides to our residents, I think, is unmatched, having gone through the pandemic over the last now two years. And working with our Support Services Manager Jennifer Anderson. Has been eye opening, to say the least, working with state agencies and county agencies and seeing that the services. That we are able to provide to our community to me goes unmatched. Also with J C P P. And also with the embedded social worker, there's only seven cities in the county that have a J C P P. Program. And only fourteen cities that have an embedded social worker, so only one of seven that have both. So those are very obviously unique programs that the city manager talked about. Some of the public safety trends that we're seeing, obviously, the need for ongoing meaningful police reform. We've instituted over thirteen police reform measures over the last year. Some have gone well, some have not gone well. The use of force policy set out by the legislature was deemed to be unconstitutional in a couple of categories. There was a lawsuit filed. That creates problems for us because then we have to train on both policies and what policy is going to be into effect and and the post board and things like that. So fortunately, there's been some successes and in some situations where we've had, obviously, had to move forward on some of the other reform. Balance increasing trust in law enforcement versus the need of effective policing, I think we're doing that very well. Obviously, over the last two years. There's been decreased trust in law enforcement, but also looking at, you know, how do we keep the community safe? The programs that we provide to the community and the feedback we get from the community, making sure that, you know, we're doing the job that we need to do. Along with that is the increasing crime rates, especially violent gun related and vehicle crimes. State statistics and county statistics show that there's double digit percentages as far as violent crime is concerned within our county. Obviously, Hennepin County being the most populated county in the state. Those are concerns for us as we're a first ring suburb of Minneapolis. Focus on employee morale, health and wellness. The feedback that we've gotten from our staff. Is, you know, help us get through these these times. And that's something that we've been able to provide either through our Chaplain Program. We're looking now at a peer support program where officers will do peer support and looking at other options that we have for our staff. Increasing numbers of officers leaving the profession, that's something a concern from a statewide basis. There's a lot of issues out there with officers leaving the profession and there's not officers to backfill for a lot of those openings. When we looked on the post board website the other day, there was only over fifty agencies throughout the state that are looking to hire multiple officers. So that's a concern for ours, rising need for addressing mental health calls. We have approximately three hundred mental health calls this last year. Fortunately for embedded social worker, she's been working with us on that caseload, but obviously, there's there's concerns about. You know, whether or not we have to go out and place holds and on a hundred and ninety nine of those three hundred calls roughly, we had to place. Seventy two hour emergency holds on those people, so, you know, working through some of that through time with our staff and things like that. Takes its toll on our officers. Next slide, please. So what are our opportunities and our challenges? Obviously, officers leaving the profession is one of the big issues. We have departments from Florida, from Vegas, from several other jurisdictions throughout the country coming up and recruiting and taking. Those officers that we need to backfill, not only for people leaving the profession, but also retirements. That are occurring, ongoing COVID nineteen illness for our staff. Also, working with that through our our public, first, excuse me, Support Services and Bloomington Public Health and working with their staff. Officer injuries, reduced availability and quality of officer applicants, which sort of goes with the first bullet. We've gone through approximately about eighty applicants and we're not seeing the quality of officers. That we want to see in those processes, so obviously, we're still looking at different ways that we can look at recruiting and. Hire different types of officers. Understaffed number of sworn officers, we have not really increased our staff since nineteen seventy five. Obviously, in nineteen seventy five, the job was different, in the eighties, it was different, the nineties, and as we're expected to do more. And the job becomes more complicated, we have not increased our staffing levels necessarily as. The city has become more dense, more populated, and it's more expected of us to do on a day to day basis. One of the reforms we did put in back in two thousand fourteen was a rigorous character based hiring process. Obviously, we look at hiring for character, there was an article in the Star Tribune a couple of weeks ago about agencies moving to that. We did that eight years ago because character based hiring and and law enforcement is critical. You weed out the people who maybe don't have the necessary character traits to be able to do the job. And we want to make sure that we hire the best people to serve our citizens and serve our community, and we've been successful in doing that. Increased focus on officer wellness, I talked about a little bit. We're looking at additional resources, whether it's peer support or other resources for our officer wellness initiatives. Continue to provide exceptional police service, obviously, with the increased crime throughout the metro area coupled with staffing issues. This could affect police services and the level of service that we'll be able to provide. So we're watching that very closely. Officers need to spend additional time for de escalation, mental health incidents, complex crimes. Taking the time to establish rapport with the community, et cetera. On average, our officers are on calls probably thirty five to forty minutes longer than they were even a decade ago. And that takes time and and we want them to spend that time, but also it puts a strain on our resources. Increased health risks, excuse me, due to ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. That's something that stressed our staff, obviously, like fire, like public works, other departments. Our staff are tired, they're worn out, they're fatigued, they're at a breaking point. Increased access to new technology, heavy dependence on technology related systems. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for for allowing us to continue being dispatched by Dyna for police and fire and also the ability to go to Tyler Technology. Technologies where we'll get better data analytics, we'll be able to collect more information. But also will give us a technological advantage that we currently don't have at this point with some of the mobile devices that we use out in the community. And then increased costs for hardware, software and contract maintenance are all going up, so next slide, please. So our public safety needs, our goal is to minimize crime and maintain exceptional police service while maintaining trust with the community. Increase in sworn officer staffing levels if if possible. Maximize our officers' mental and physical and spiritual health. Acquire and maintain modern technologies to enable our officers to be more efficiently and effectively handle their duties on a day to day basis. So that's all I have for my slides. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions from council and P D? Okay, looks like we have none. Oh, Councilmember Chomin.
Quick, quick question, chief. Not a not a data question, just kind of a gut. That question. Jean, I've referenced with the officers, but really in the last, you know, three to four months, six months. There have been more opportunities for us to connect with the community. Up people, officers are able to be in community more now that masks and mandates are coming down. I was just wondering, in the in the relatively recent past, do you see? Any improvement there or impounding effects of multiple stresses just kind of continuing that? That that lays not it's not a perfect answer, I just wondered if you could just kind of reflect on 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 short term activities, are they having a positive effect or?
I think, yeah, I think they are, I mean, I think the the fact that we're able now to get out in the community, we have several J C P P. Things scheduled. Our officers are are obviously not in our in our covert protocols, which is stressful enough and how they respond to calls and and the things that they need to do. And I think that's that's opening them up a little bit more to be able to get back to some sense of normal. And so I think they're appreciative of that and we're seeing that a little bit more. In in the way they react to coming to work and their spirits and and things like that, so I think it's have it has had a positive effect. But I think, you know, as all of us have gone through COVID and and some of the issues that have happened within law enforcement over the last two years. It's still going to take us a significant amount of time to get through some of these issues and look at additional resources that we can provide.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like we can go to the next. Intention.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, I'm Public Works Director Kristin Asher. I'm going to go over public works, so I'm going to try not to repeat what other departments have shared. But with our changing community, we're also seeing a higher self identified disability community, which means and everybody else. We need to reflect on our services, our outreach methods and our built environment to make sure it's inclusive. And do our best for all the residents to have the same opportunities. Yes, the transportation models are changing, we've got more households that are driving less, some people have no car. The cars are changing, we have B R T. In Richfield now, more on the way. So the things that we've done for multimodal advancement puts us ahead of a lot of cities, people options. But the the trend of change is not slowing down in the transportation realm. Our infrastructure resiliency plan, as the council knows, we are focused on reinvesting in our aging underground infrastructure. But we also need to be talking about the city's other infrastructure, including our park buildings and and everything else that we're responsible for maintaining and upkeeping. And then climate change related to that, the trends that we've seen pop up in recent years are things like the frozen water services that we hear about in the winters now. And pressurized storm water pipes in the summer in those storms, those are the things that were not common even six years ago. So that seemed to be common for us now. And then next slide, please. Well, we need to identify a stable and predictable funding source for our critical and aging infrastructure reinvestment, we've talked about that in the past. Our right aways are becoming congested, so our boulevards have a lot of private underground utilities and infrastructure within them, including gas, electric. Countless telecom companies are trying to get in our right away and it's making it very difficult to find room for everybody at this point. And we know that it's just going to keep advancing. And this also makes it difficult for us to plant our boulevard trees, so. That's something that it's an opportunity to have new advancements, but it does cause some issues for us. And then let's see the increased density. I won't go too deep into that, but that comes with the redevelopment, which is obviously an opportunity. And there's also. Some things that are going to come up that we can talk about in a future redevelopment things. Richfield has historically tried to accommodate. What we can for developers as far as regulations, specifically, for example, stormwater. We've tried to do that on a regional basis for them to help encourage redevelopment in the city because stormwater quality requirements. That are not city requirements, there's state and federal requirements. Can take a toll and can be financially kind of crippling for a developer, I would say. So we've done it regionally, but Lake, for instance, Richfield Lake has reached its capacity. So anything in that watershed, those developments are now going to have to put. On their own property, the water quality requirements and typically old, you know, in the past, it would be a pond that takes up a lot of room. And we're talking about space in Richfield is tight, so. And those underground stormwater facilities can be quite expensive, so that's just something that's going to be challenging when we see those opportunities. And then increased need for I T. Capacity, yes, there's a lot of opportunity to streamline public works, core services using emerging technologies. Our tech I T. Needs keep growing, we're increasingly relying on our advanced technologies. All of our frontline workers, most of them have iPads that they're using in the field to help us inventory and monitor the city's assets. And also helping us to build out our G I S. Next slide, please. So. Community resiliency. Utility affordability, we'll need to look at how we can maintain utility affordability for the residents while we're investing. Into our underground infrastructure and responding outside pressures like emerging contaminants and climate change. Emerald Ashbor is killing ash trees throughout the city, so even on the public right away and in our parks. That'll affect things for the public, like maybe the shade or the quality of life, maybe some property values, depending on how boulevard trees. Impact that, but the private property owners are also going to need to remove these ash trees off their own property at their own expense. And we've tried to notify people of this and alert them over the years, but that can be a cost that people are not expecting, depending on the situation. A tree removal can be any, you know, four thousand dollars for one tree, so. That's something that we're thinking might be challenging. And let's see, the equity and transportation, we're continuing to focus on reducing gaps in our bicycle and pedestrian routes. And we do want to increase our engagement for the traditionally underrepresented folks in our community. And the next opportunity, I think, for that will be nickel it, which is. Scheduled for twenty twenty six. And then commit construction and redevelopment fatigue, that's kind of. Speaks for itself, I think, people have been patient. And construction just hasn't ended, so it's always something, and I think just construction fatigue can be real. I know it is on the staff here, but this is about the community. But then there's also cost share obligations that come along with that when an external agency initiates a project that does hit us as well. Next slide. Staffing, I will try not to repeat too much here, but. Our staffing levels have had held pretty steady over the years and the demands have increased. For example, I've got a couple of examples, twenty percent of our insuring staff time is devoted to small cell. Just dealing with the permits, following up after installations. Even just restoration. And that's not something we have been doing in twenty nineteen, so that's a new add redevelopment projects are time consuming. We've had some new core services with the landscape medians and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's stormwater requirements. We got a new permit that's starting this year. Every time we get a permit, there's a lot more requirements that is a lot more for us to do and it's really time consuming. But like an opportunity with our new streetscapes, we have the opportunity now to really get on those sidewalks that we didn't really have a way to clean very well after a snowfall. But that's more demanding for our staff because now instead of having most of our staff out right after it snows. Clearing the roads and then moving to the sidewalks, we have every single body available out there doing it all at the same time, which is great. It's just more demanding and then. Enter agency reconstruction projects, I'll just throw four ninety four out there, that's really time consuming and we just have. The same amount of staff with less time to do the work we were doing when those projects aren't happening. Quickly, we've onboarded new ten new employees since this time last year. We've got about eight full time employee retirements that we know of in the next five years. And we've just been having trouble finding candidates that are as experienced and skilled as ones that we're used to. And then the water plant itself has its own challenges with staffing and recruitment. Next slide, Chris. And finally, just, I won't reiterate the funding and core services, I pretty much talked about all that already. The only thing I haven't mentioned is that those emerging contaminants that threaten our first water. That we do need to talk about that emergency water interconnect in the event that we do end up with contaminated source. And then the. Like all the other divisions and departments, the increased reliance on new technologies to do our day to day work is is good and it will improve our service. But it comes at a cost, we have to learn how to use it, we have to pay for it. And then we also have to understand that these investments will require updated platforms to even operate. And I think that's where the city is is lagging, so that they're not even available to us really at this point. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Director Asher. Questions from council?
I need to just want to make one one comment more for like a future discussion or funding thing, and I mentioned this in the past with financial presentations. I still would like us to sort of more carefully reconsider how we don't use special assessments at all for roadway funding, especially caring how much roadway debt we're taking on. I I both think it's just impractical, we only have so much money, we need other revenue sources. And also, I don't, I don't think it's particularly fair right now that basically people living in high density housing are subsidizing streets they never drive on for people who live in low density housing that require a lot of street frontage. So I, that's a very difficult issue because it does mean more expense to homeowners and that's not always a popular issue. But I would like us in the future to have some conversation about how we might be able to use that as a as a partial contribution and not proposing that we just give homeowners the whole bill.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Other questions? Okay, looks like we can go to recreation. go to recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Amy Markle. I'm the Recreation Services Director, and I'll be presenting on recreation and also sustainability trends in our community. We have seen an increased use of recreation programs due to pandemic. You know, parks have been one of the safer places for people to enjoy, you know, wellness and activities together during the pandemic. So we've seen a huge increase in, you know, attendance and programming. A lot of our programs are full with a waitlist, which is a good thing. We have seen an increase in shelter rentals, increase in pool pass sales. We had a record year last year of pool attendance and pool pass sales. We also have seen an increase in drop-in use of our fields, courts, playgrounds, which is all, you know, great that they're being used. COVID-19 has forced us to kind of think more creatively and out of the box. We've done a lot of virtual programming, at-home activities and self-guided programs at different park sites. We had over 1.3 million impressions with our virtual programming outreach as of February of last year. So we did have a lot of people involved with the virtual program. The community is diversifying, so there is a demand for new programming to make sure it's inclusive and that we're reaching everybody with opportunities where they can fully participate. Another major trend is that our infrastructure is aging. We have an older park system that has been well-maintained, but it has lacked, in many instances, major reinvestment in it. A lot of it's coming to that critical age where it needs major reinvestment. And more of a sustainability trend that climate change is happening and society as a whole is very slow to respond. There's also opportunities and challenges. We have aging infrastructure. As I said, you know, everything has been well-maintained to the best of our ability, but it does need reinvestment. We have critical infrastructure that is aging. You know, as you know, our pool and Wood Lake turned 50 last year. We have our original pool liner that has been kind of band-aided together every season with a talented staff that knows how to weld. But I always feel like every season, you know, we, if we sprung a big leak, it would not surprise us. So that needs major reinvestment, as well as the nature center. The community center turned 60 last year, so it too is an older building that doesn't always meet the demands of, of the community in a modern community center. We also have increased density, which puts us drains on facilities. A good example of that is soccer fields. You know, if I had some people out playing soccer 24/7 in the summer, it would happen, but we do have to rest the fields so they don't turn into mud. But we just have so much demand for fields right now. And climate crisis will also put more pressure on facilities. You know, a couple good examples, we had a lot of stormwater and wind that blew away the Wood Lake, Wood Lake boardwalk a few years ago and crushed it. This past fall, we had a high-wind event that blew like half of the pool roof off. So we've seen, you know, big storms and their impacts on some of the park facilities. The needs are also changing. We need to make sure that our programs are attractive to everyone, making sure we're removing barriers to, for full participation. There's a need to expand self-guided activities and making sure things are in multiple languages, and that there's a increase to free to low-cost programming. You know, as soon as we offer free-to-low-cost programming, it usually is quite popular in field, in fills. You know, a good example is our playground program, a lot of our self-guided activities, some of our partnership programs with grant-funded programs we've been able to offer for free as well. We also continue to offer some virtual programming. It's still popular. It's another way for people to participate in some of the things we have, such as the Urban Wildland Race. People can run the virtual race and kind of run that distance on their own. There's also some different trends in athletics. You know, we are seeing an increased demand for soccer, a decrease in softball, also a huge increase of requests for pickleball and renting courts and playing pickleball in the city. As it relates to sustainability, there's opportunity and challenges as well. I know in every community, there's varying views of climate change, you know, everything from it's an emergency to it doesn't exist. Integrating sustainable practices with other departments can be challenging as well. Every department kind of has their own way of doing things in a culture, so it can be challenging implementing, you know, new practices and measures. It's often hard to solve some of the larger sustainability problems. There is existing framework for regional work. You know, good examples, our partners in energy program with Excel Energy, our Green Step Cities program, you know, where we can partner and, and get a lot accomplished. And also, there's been a delayed response to climate change, which could lead to more costs later. You know, a good example that Director Asher mentioned is just increased water that's coming into stormwater ponds, and where does it go, and having a plan for that. It's also important to keep in mind, our sustainability specialist Rachel in home is just one person, and just working within that capacity of, you know, one person. She also has several other staff. You know, like Chris Ling's been awesome, and, you know, Chris Swanson as well, that's helped so many of that efforts we've done. But at the end of the day, she really is one person. So just keeping that in check as we set priorities and goals in the coming month. When we look at the needs in our department, you know, one thing we'd like to explore is adding a recreation manager position that could help assist with events and programming and some of the new goals that we have to really make sure that programs are bilingual and culturally inclusive as possible. We like to make sure we're adding more multicultural programming that's bilingual, increase access and use of technology, which I know you've heard across the board tonight. And then also, a major reinvestment plan in our park system that, that involves funds outside of the grocery store revenues. So we can look at some of the bigger projects, and it could be decades down the line, but at least there's a plan for, you know, things like a community center, or an alternative to that. There's some work that needs to be done at the pool, the ice arena, Wood Lake Nature Center. Then also, just having a consistent budget for sustainability work. And we added on this whole wing of work that we're doing as sustainability, but there hasn't been any funds designated for it. And we've been able to pay for organized collection and containers and the costs associated with that through not having positions full. But moving forward, you know, we do need to have designated funds so we can do that work and do it well. I can take any questions as well. Any questions on recreation?
Um, I'm just curious, I think the next session will get much more into where we want to go, but just to clarify, can you say more about like how much the sustainability work already is like involving multiple departments? Or like, what's the current state of things there?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, yeah, it's, it's nice, because Rachel falls within the recreation department, so we work collaboratively together. And then she's housed over at Public Works, and a lot of the work she does that relates to trees and water and some of the education, she'll work with staff over at Public Works on a weekly basis. So she's really kind of worked across several departments to get the work, you know, done that's been assigned to her. And I know she's worked with the executive staff as well, your city manager at Regress, and analyst Swanson. It's been really instrumental with laying out the organized collection on the past several months.
Thank you.
Other questions before we move on? Okay, looks like we can move on.
So we're running over, so I'm gonna go through this quickly and wrap up. As you heard, there's been many trends that are repeated throughout the organization, and they impact the four pillars of the organization and our community. Next slide, please. For finance, we expect a tight labor market to continue. That'll put pressure on the budget, and you couple that with the financial challenges and how to continue to fund infrastructure without taking on too much debt and continue to fund those programs that invest in our community. It's gonna make it difficult to hire more staff and to hire and to start new programs. But as you heard, there are needs for staff. And again, this was repeated throughout as well, and that's because we're living it every day. The churn citywide in our staffing is taking its toll. It's disruptive, and it's impacting morale. We're also less efficient because we're losing experience. Retention and recruitment has gotten really hard, and it's at critical levels for police officers. It's hard for all of us filling positions, but it's gotten to a critical level with police officers. Our technology and processes are also not current and hampering progress. We are, I think we're working harder than we need to, but updating them will take time and it'll take money. I heard a really, I think, a really apt quote recently by James Clear. He said, "You don't, you do not rise to the level of your goals. You fall to the level of your systems." And I suggest that we need to first update our systems to make progress. If you want to go to infrastructure, we have made gains in investing in our infrastructure, but we have a heavy debt load until that starts to roll off in 2029. And as you've heard, we still have significant infrastructure needs, and we'll need to reinvest to mitigate the impacts of climate change. And as mentioned before, investing in current technology is an urgent need, and it'll be an ongoing challenge. So we've hired, next slide, please, Chris. We've hired a consultant to share the results of the community engagement and help conduct that. We already know our community is, is changing, but I don't want to get too much into that, because there's a whole presentation on all of their feedback. So, as I said from the beginning, it, it was really helpful for me to review the data and the analysis from our leadership team at the 30,000-foot level. For me, the key takeaways are that we need to slow down to speed up, taking time to stabilize our staff, update our systems, and create a more sustainable financial plan will create, I, I believe, a more cohesive and efficient organization so that we can continue to achieve council goals. And with that, I will turn it over to Cory. And Cory, I don't know if I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Is it Cory Porras-Plass?
You win. Perfect.
With the Rep Consulting Group, and she will present the community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm glad I got a chance to listen in. This is really fascinating. And actually, I think pairing that with some of the data I'm gonna present is gonna be very interesting. So, a little bit about me. My name is Cory Porras-Plass. A little bit about my background. I started my career as a 911 dispatcher. I've worked in the city manager's office in a couple of different communities. And I'm also, but my career's kind of always been around public service. So for example, I was the executive director of the Wisconsin City County Management Association. I ran the, I was the membership director of the Alliance for Innovation. My whole, my career has kind of been around this. And one of the things I love doing is working with communities, kind of engaging their stakeholders. So this was a wonderful opportunity for me. The job I left just prior to coming to Rep Consulting was I was actually working with Polco NRC, which I believe did some, your last survey. So if you're going through and you're looking at some of the platform, it looks familiar, now you know why. And hopefully, I'll be able to dig in a little bit to the data and help as well. Chris, I was going to ask you, would you mind sharing the screen? Because I think it might be helpful, especially with data. If I can kind of go back and forth and be able to see if people have got questions. I don't want to get too far into it with data if they've got questions. Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you so much. I just didn't realize I was not going to be able to, to do both. So with that, we'll go ahead, and we're gonna jump in here. Poor Chris, I did this to him on the fly, so my apologies.
Everyone can see it?
Yes, if you could just go to the first slide, that would be great.
Awesome. This slide?
Um, no, it looks like you're on slide five.
Let's see.
So I've got a bunch of slides that I'm going to go through real quick, because I want to give you an idea just kind of who we heard from with the survey. So I'm gonna discuss two things that we did today. One of them is the community survey that we did. It was online. We had both the Spanish language, and we had one that was in English. And as City Manager Rodriguez mentioned, we had over 600 responses, including four on the Spanish-language survey. Perfect. We're great, Chris. Thank you.
We're good now?
Yep. Go one more slide for me. We're perfect. So who did we talk to? I wanted to go ahead and cover this real quick, again, quickly. We've talked to mostly people who lived in Richfield. There were a few people responding from outside of the city. There were also some business owners who responded. Next slide, please. Um, who did we talk to? We talked to more women than men. I hate to tell you this, but that's pretty common. For whatever reason, women are more likely to respond to surveys. So this is pretty consistent with what I've seen nationally in regard to, to community surveys. Next slide, please. Age, again, you guys are pretty consistent with what I see nationally. You actually skew a little bit younger than what I normally see. So normally, what we see is it really kind of does almost like a perfect curve. You guys are actually kind of towards the younger end of that. But in terms, though, of having, you know, a couple people who are under 18, a handful of people 18 to 22, and then kind of increasing numbers, that is all very common. And then also, 75 years and older. I always love the fact that even though it's an online survey, we tend to get a lot of people who are older who are participating as well. Next slide, please. Living situation, we overwhelmingly heard from homeowners. Some renters, the others tended to be, they were still living with parents, or something like that was what their response was. Next slide, please. And then race. We heard overwhelmingly from people who were white. Again, that is very, very common when we're looking at, at surveys like this. A lot of it just tend to kind of be a trust gap. Sometimes it's a little bit harder to reach communities of color, but this is very common with what we're seeing. I'm very happy that a report that the focus groups actually kind of offset that. So I do really feel like we were able to hear from a wide variety of residents in Richfield, just not all necessarily on this particular survey. Next slide, please. And then again, about 95% of the people identified themselves as not being of Hispanic, Latino, or special origin, and about 5% said they did identify of being of that origin. Next slide, please. And then, as a member of your household have a disability. We had yes, about 17%, and no for about 83%. Next slide. And then, lens of your children under the age of 18 in your household. And again, we heard from a lot of people who have got children under the age of 18, not quite half, but pretty close. Next slide. So let's go ahead and start digging into some of this data. And I am kind of trying to keep an eye. If anybody raises a hand, please let me know, but also feel free to go ahead and stop me. So what I did is that people had the opportunity to choose three things that they liked best about living in Richfield. And as you can see, I went ahead and I organized it, recording to responses. So it will add up to more than 100% because they got to choose three. But overwhelmingly, what we're looking at here is things like location. That was almost twice as much as anything else. People really liked the location. And again, there's more information about that that came out in the focus groups, but that is definitely a value. Parks and Rec area also was something that is very high, as well as a peaceful community, affordability, cost of living, and then city services. Things kind of down at the other end, and then there are some others, and I'll go ahead and look at that in a second, because that was actually really fascinating. But just to kind of give you an idea what people like best. Next slide, please. So this was fascinating. So I did a word cloud on this, and sometimes word clouds are helpful, and sometimes they're really not. And in this case, I really felt that it was. Because what really came through on this is what they liked about Richfield is the diversity. It is not just a community that's diverse, it's a community that's proud of its diversity and is proud of the fact that there are a lot of different perspectives and experiences. And that came through loud and clear, but also the, the fact that it still feels to a lot of people like it's a small community, community. There is proximity to Minneapolis, St. Paul, but that it, it still kind of has more of a smaller town feel to it and not as much of it. Next slide, please. So what I did with these next couple of slides is that what I, what we did is that we were rating how important things were on a variety of things, and I combined both very important and somewhat important. Because basically, what we're doing is that, you know, these things are, that you really do feel are important or really kind of neutral or not at all. So when we go ahead and look at this, and again, I've sorted it, if If we look down um, at from the bottom up, some of the things that are most important and public safety was rated number one. Both in terms of being very important, but then overall, um, ninety-some percent of your residents, um, you know, said that public safety was extremely important for their quality of life. Parks and recreation areas. And again, I don't think there's any great surprise here that that was something that was very important to residents. Uh, neighborhood appearance, local stores and shopping and city services were all things that were very important. One thing I do want to just kind of pull out of the data here is I would like to look at the schools. Because that was actually something um, that a number of people rated as very important. Um, rather than somewhat important, so I just kind of want to pull that out, get a little buried of the data. But there is a, a good number of people who view the schools as being very important to the quality of life in Richmond. Next slide, please. So then we also want to go ahead and look at um, how satisfied, if at all, you are with the quality of the following services or features. Um, I had a lot of people, um, not just in the survey, but actually also in the focus groups as well, that raged about the drinking water. Um, they were really, really happy um, with the quality of the drinking water. And so again, I've combined both those very satisfied and this uh, somewhat satisfied. And you know, w- we went ahead and we sorted it. So things for um, oh, the quality of life in Richfield um, is seen as being something that people are very, very satisfied with. Again, parks and park facilities, roads, public safety. One of the things, again, I do want to pull out of this and look at real quick. If we go all the way down to fire and emergency medical response. Um, that is something that, there was a large number of people who were very satisfied. And again, just with the way I organized the data, I did want to make sure to draw attention to that. Because there is, uh, it looks like uh, sixty percent or so um, are saying that they are very satisfied with fire and emergency medical response. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So thinking about the future of Richfield, what are three most important things for strong and healthy community? And again, we've got um, things add up to more than a hundred percent because they can choose for uh, three. Um, but a sense of safety and security um, came out very definitely um, number one on that. High quality schools, high quality city services. Um, a diverse, inclusive and welcoming community. And again, you're kind of seeing that that really is a value um, that I found the community really holds. Um, and then well-maintained residential and commercial properties. And again, as we kind of start going down, you know, a little bit less, um, but there's a lot of things in here that really are um, a great way for us to kind of prioritize for the residents. Um, based on what they said, what some of the things are that they're finding most important. Next slide, please. And then rating how important, if at all, each of the following art of the future of Richmond, uh, I'm sorry, Richfield, my mistake there. Um, safe community, again, and you're seeing that over and over and over again, coming through as, as a theme. Um, that safety is very important. And as much I used to work with uh, Polco National Research Center. And that's just consistent with what we find, that's probably the number one thing when we're looking at survey data overall. And people are rating their um, community and how important certain things are. Safe community always comes up very, very close to the top. Affordable city services is another one that um, again, a lot of people are seeing as essential or somewhat important. A good place to grow, uh, raise a family and grow old. I think that we've already talked about some of those things with housing. Um, and I think that, that this question really kind of gets to that, that there's that need for a variety of kinds of housing. Um, green space preservation. And again, I want to pull out a couple of these, just to make sure that kind of don't get buried. Um, one of them being the high quality schools, again, is one of those that is looked at as essential uh, for a, for the future of Richfield. And also a welcoming place for diverse communities is seen as essential for the future of Richfield. Next slide, please. And then um, ex- the extent to which you agree or disagree with the following statements. And so again, what I did is I pulled out the ones where people agree um, with this. So it is, and of course, I'm having a hard time noticing this, so I'm going to pull up the actual survey itself. It looked like more of it came out initially, so give me just a second here. Waiting for it to load, so give me just a second. Uh, okay, so if we're looking at this then, um, you know, the first one is uh, if we're looking down at the bottom. Um, it should that uh, the city should invest in pro- projects and programs that enhance the quality of life for all community members. Um, and the one above that is the city has done a good job upgrading its infrastructure. So roads, uh, water, sanitary sewer, all those type of things over the last decade. Um, a high quality school system. Um, the city plows do a good job during weather events. Um, these are all things that your residents strongly agree. One of the things that I want to pull out, and again, my apologies, I, when I did this, more of it was showing up. I don't know what happened with the formatting. Um, that's my bad. But I will get you this list just so that you can see it. Um, I'll replace this slide so you can get it. But overall, one of the things I do want you um, to, to look at is that um, you, you really have got a, 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 uh, community with very high expectations. Um, they really are looking at a lot of things as being very, very important. Next slide, please.
I have a quick question about the slide of those items.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, the like scope or specificity of them varies so much between those statements. And I was just curious, like survey design way that is like, the question about sidewalks is very specific. That was exactly fifty percent. But then like, the last one you said that everybody agrees with is like, quite general. So I would expect a lot of people to agree with that. Was there a reason why they're kind of interspersed of, those are kind of the two extremes, but they, the other ones kind of bounce around in specificity?
We did this actually in conjunction with Richfield's staff. Um, and so I think that it was just a, I think it was looking at some of the needs of specific departments. In addition to um, going through and actually looking at the surveys um, themselves. And I, please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on that, but I believe that that may have been at least partially department driven.
Okay, so it really was multiple, multiple stakeholders wanting to ask different things. Okay.
Yes. Are there any other questions on the data? If you go to the next slide, please. Okay, now we're going to expect, I guess I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Oh, no, thank you. Uh, I really appreciate the data. Uh, um, and I just was wondering if you, you, you kind of highlighted the, sort of the self-selecting respondents, you know, that are, you know, next and, you know, two-thirds female to female, to male. And, and um, I was just, I, are you going to, the small, the, the focus groups, maybe touch on that, that later or just talk? Do you ever nor or anything to be gained from waiting certain responses um, or correcting the data for, for those those to give feedback?
Yep, so um, love it. Let's dive a little bit into survey um, work here. So there's two different types of surveys. One is called probability and that's like, when you do the national community survey that you go through and you have a representative sample of um, everybody in the, the community, right? So you may not talk to anybody, but if you get a good, you get a good sample though, and so you'll do it randomly. You'll choose by address and you may over-sample some things. Um, so for example, we know that um, people who are less responsive generally to survey tend to be people who are younger, people who rent, people of color. People who English as a second language. And so you may over-sample those communities and then you may wait it. So that's that national community survey, that's um, what I believe you guys did in, in twenty twenty. This is an open participation survey. With an open participation survey, um, one of the, the advantages of, you guys did this for Polco. Um, and I actually got into some fascinating discussions in a couple of the focus groups about this. There is a thing called snowball sampling. And snowball sampling means that if you get some people in some of those harder to reach populations to respond to survey questions and share it with their friends, there is trust issues um, among a lot of the, the communities that, um, you know, we consider in the hard-to-reach category. And so if somebody with credibility in that community says, oh, hey, please share, you know, please take this so that everybody knows. Then we are able to get a more robust response. So it's one of those things that we need to continue to grow over time. But just one of the things with survey research is it just is always that there are certain people we are more likely to hear from. Homeowners, um, people who are white, uh, people who are, um, you know, more middle-aged rather than younger. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think a little bit, I just wonder if there be, because it wasn't weighted. You know, did we, you know, for a lack of, for, to just be specific, white women, you know, dominated the survey. Yeah, and so should we, how should we reflect on that when we reflect on the data?
So that is, again, the, 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 the larger the sample size you have, um, you know, it, it honestly, and believe it or not, having a a go ahead.
I can, uh, I I just didn't give you like a more specific question, like multiple, just like specifically with the product that you gave to us. How should we, if it's not weighted, like, how should we weight it? Or should we ho- hold this with some, somewhat of a grain of salt? Or how, how should we think about this particular, not just in general, but just with what we're looking at right now?
Cory, can I jump in real quick, by any chance? Um, so, so Councilmember Schutman, one of the things that we're going to do after this, we've started having conversations with Cory. Is we realized that there's um, some areas of our surveys that we'd really like to dive into. Because certain, you know, uh, groups are affected, uh, more interested in certain things and, you know, different ways. And having a better drill down into those areas of those specific demographics we thought would be beneficial. Like, for example, um, I would say that like, we had eighty-five responses from business owners. You guys living in Richfield know that's a lot of our business owners that actually responded to the survey. And then having interest in how they responded to stuff, maybe not individually, but of those eighty-five, where their interests are in specific issues. Um, and then being able to kind of present some of that information to make it just a little bit more useful, depending on the group. Like specifically with some of the things um, that uh, this, the council's been interested in regarding our uh, communities of color, um, drilling down some of that information as well with them to kind of figure out, instead of just as a whole. But has it reflects to certain demographics specifically?
And if I can
That's great. All right.
There's a, I, I, what I would say, I just kind of add on um, to that, there are, with all survey designs, there are, there are things that are beneficial and not beneficial. In terms of how to interpret this, I'm very glad that you are doing this. And part of the reason why we did it this way was to be able to um, have a variety of different inputs. Which is why the focus groups were so important. We did have a lot of people of color in that. So um, I would never tell you to take anything other than something like the MCS, which is weighted. Um, that's got a very high confidence level. An open participation survey does not. But I would say that this coupled with a lot of the other information that we have, I really do feel is pretty representative of the community. Is that helpful?
Really helpful. And I just, I think I saw City Manager Rodriguez uh, just comment that the, the, the MCS survey was also weighted in, in, in similar in a lot of ways. So thank, thank you for, for entertaining my question.
Yes, my, no, my pleasure. And, and this is, again, there's, there's always kind of, um, there's always kind of advantages and disadvantages. Um, one of the disadvantages is you don't get that high level of um, of confidence, you'll get the high confidence level. But sometimes you are able to get to more people, um, you know, in the community. And actually getting ten percent of the people who are not identifying themselves as white or identifying themselves as white, actually is a very good survey response. That's a very hard, it's not something we see very often.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions?
I have one question. Um, I wanted to ask City Manager Rodriguez, you might actually know the answer to this. Um, does the information that we collected from the city survey to all of our residents apply in terms of using that as an additional data source? Because I just, is that outdated and that was pre, I believe that was pre-COVID also. So I don't know if it's not relevant anymore, but I was surprised to see the low um, interest in kind of arts and culture. Because I specifically remember from that response, from that survey, that that was an area where a lot of people said, we need more arts and culture. So I just felt like it was conflicting, but I don't know if it's even relevant anymore.
Yeah, and I can send that summary out to council um, again, and we can, and we can put it out publicly again. We um, we still have it um, and it, and it was a weighted survey and it asked similar questions, not the same questions, but similar questions. So if that's um, something the council would like to do, we can certainly do that.
Wait, uh, wait, um, I'm confused on that, that response. Um, you mean like to open that survey back up and put it out to the community again? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no, no. I'm suggesting we can send you the results of the survey and we can also provide that to the community.
Got it, okay, thank you. Is it still relevant and how long ago was it done?
It was, it was early twenty twenty.
Okay, so it's a couple of years old now. I don't know if it's still relevant. I don't know if it's still relevant or not. I don't know the answer to that.
I can, if I, if I may, what I would say there, I think there's certainly may be parts of it that are um, very relevant. But we've had a whole lot of things happen, um, you know, in that, that two years. And so I would, um, if I was looking, I think that there may be some things that are very relevant in there. I would um, suggest that perhaps you look at it particularly um, in regard to the focus groups. I was very happy with the diversity that I saw in the focus groups, not just in terms of race, but in terms of um, age, uh, gender, some other factors. And um, honestly, I think that is, there were pretty open-ended questions. I'm going to go ahead and get into that um, next. That might be helpful as something to put up against that, that survey data um, to see. And there may be some things that you want to drill down into a little bit more. Were there any other questions? Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead then and get into the focus groups. Um, as I already kind of mentioned, I thoroughly enjoyed um, scripts that we had here in Richfield. It was a um, a great experience. I, the groups themselves um, were um, a whole lot of different um, people. And so, so for example, um, even though um, we did have a group specifically for historically marginalized um, community members. We, we had a whole lot of people with a whole lot of racial, ethnic, um, age, income diversity in the other focus groups as well. So I was very pleased at just the variety of perspectives that we heard within those focus groups. I think it led to a very robust um, conversation. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. So a little bit about the actual overview itself, again, we did this over um, four days. Um, there were residents from several groups that were targeted, so including community leadership, a faith community, disability community, historically marginalized community and renters. And then we also had three focus groups, uh, one for the business community, one for staff, and then one for elected and appointed officials. So again, a total of eight. Next slide, please. Little about what a focus group is. Uh, it's a small group discussion with a trained facilitator. It's an opportunity to really get in-depth information about a community's thoughts and opinions. One of the things I like, I love to put focus groups next to some of the data like we just had, because they're really very different processes. Um, a focus group may go ahead, even if they have the same question, they may go in a slightly different direction, even a wildly different direction. Um, than somebody who has the exact same question is part of the fun of a focus group. But it's great though to be able to kind of put those two pieces of information together. People who have very open-ended qualitative, um, you know, kinds of data versus the more quantitative of the survey. So um, focus groups with Richfield, we talked about strengths and challenges for the city. Um, readings were roughly sixty to seventy minutes. Um, participants were recruited by uh, city staff. I know that Neil and um, Chris did an amazing job um, in terms of really making sure that we had a, a good number of people to talk to and a lot of variety of opinions. Um, and then again, they were diverse in a variety of ways, which was especially given the demographics of your community. I was very happy to see, we did have a lot of young people because they can be very hard to recruit. We really did have a lot of diversity of opinion, life experiences, et cetera. Next slide, please. So what did we ask about? Um, so these are actually the seven questions that we asked. And um, sometimes if a conversation was kind of leading in another direction, we might ask a couple of follow-up questions. But these same seven questions were asked of all of the focus groups. So um, you, when you think about what you like best about the city, what kinds of things come to mind? When you think about Richfield as compared to other suburban communities, what comes to mind with some of the challenges? What are disadvantages of living in Richfield compared to other places? You could change things about Richfield, what would they be? With all of the things that the city does, what are the most important? Are the important roles that the city plays in maintaining and creating a good quality of life? Are the important roles that the city plays in maintaining and creating a good quality of life? Um, where the most important to maintain your creating a high quality future? And then if you could choose three things for the city to focus efforts and resources on over the next five years, what would they be? Next slide, please. So as I was going through, um, and again, I talked to, um, I talked to eight, we talked to eight different focus groups. Um, I had six of them and Craig had two. And so there was a whole lot of data, because, you know, we talked for at least an hour for each one. What I found though is that there were some pretty common themes that came out of this. And so I want to go ahead and kind of explore those things on kind of a thematic basis. So these are the, the, some of the themes that we're going to, um, go through. Next slide, please. So location, atmosphere and amenities. Um, that small town atmosphere overwhelmingly seen as an asset. Um, and also the diversity in a number of ways, including race, age, um, you know, uh, income levels. It is seen universally as a positive. Um, that is something that your residents really take a lot of pride in. Is that you've got this great community where there's a whole bunch of different perspectives, um, but that it still is a, a pretty cohesive community. Proximity to the airport in Minneapolis, um, as it seems big advantage, probably no big surprise there. Um, there were, I do want to know that there were, um, some differences noted, experiences for people of color and renters. Um, so some of the focus groups, some of the things that came out was that they felt sometimes a little bit, uh, more disconnected. Um, that there was, um, you know, almost a, a sense, I had someone say there's almost kind of too rich fields sometimes. Um, that came specifically out of the renters and, um, the renters group, but that there was kind of a difference between people who own homes and the renters, that there, there really was some differences, um, in the populations and, and some, what some of the challenges, um, were. So overwhelmingly, everybody saw the diversity as a, an asset. But sometimes there were differences in terms of experience of community. Does that make sense? Not seeing anybody telling me no, so I'm gonna keep going. Um, roundabouts, um, I talked to people all over the country and roundabouts come up every single time. Um, some of the things that you guys got to hear about with your roundabouts, there was concern, um, particularly about, um, the ability to cross the road. And this came up in several of the focus groups, including the disability one. Um, that's very hard with, sometimes with, um, cars going around to be able to pass safely. Um, safety was a real issue. Also, um, older people being able again to cross safely. That was an issue with the roundabouts. Um, and also there was, uh, some concern about it, um, potentially decreasing some response times, that it made it more difficult, it slowed everything down. Um, sidewalks were another big topic of conversation. Um, and again, um, the things that I have here, sometimes they came out of, um, one focus group, but I was really kind of trying to include things I heard from more than one, um, area. This is one of those that I heard primarily from the disability, um, group and primarily those with, um, issues with mobility. Um, sidewalks are a really big problem for that population. And the reason why is they said that sometimes they will just stop for no reason. And if you are in a wheelchair, that obviously can make it very difficult then, um, to kind of navigate. Um, too close to the street. Again, that was seen as very much a safety issue. Um, not cleared after storms, again, not consistently, um, you know, all the way through that they might hit some place that had, um, you know, a patch of ice or something like that. And again, if they are in a wheelchair, they have mobility issues. Those became real safety concerns and then not consistently, um, smooth. There was some, um, just comments about, you know, especially again, people who are, are have got some mobility challenges, um, a consistently smooth sidewalk really does impact their ability to be able to navigate effectively around Richfield. Um, and then excessive speed in residential areas, that was also flagged as a concern. Um, and I heard things like, um, that, uh, near parks, um, other places, um, that kids may be, um, or other places where, uh, you don't get, you might have people who are, um, have got more mobility issues, people who are, um, older or something um, like that, where you can expect to have more ability, um, that, that, that there may be, they may be impacted by how quickly they're able to kind of get out of the street and their speed limits for seasons being excessive, um, and unsafe. Next slide, please. Zoning and code enforcement. Again, um, zoning changes were something that came up, um, very loud and clear with the, uh, the disabilities, uh, community. They really, um, saw that things like how, um, housing options at zoning changes, um, would really be helpful. So one of the things was zero threshold, um, doors. If you have some sort of raised threshold in doorways, that can really wind up being, um, a, a real issue for anybody again who is in a wheelchair, has other mobility challenges. Um, there's kind of a perception, and this is like something I was kind of hearing through several other groups, that, um, things are kind of pieced in without an overall plan. And I know that part of that just kind of goes along with redevelopment. Um, but it, it just, it just seems just jointed, um, to some of the people in a couple of the different focus groups and just might be something to consider. Um, and then there was conversation in several other groups, um, one of them being the business group and a couple of the others about Penn Avenue, um, but just the, the exterior of those buildings looks like it is in disrepair and that they really feel like there needs to be better code enforcement, because it's kind of hard to bring in more, um, businesses and really kind of elevate, um, that particular area if it looks like there's a lot of vacancies and that, that all of the buildings look like they are not being held the same high standards as it is elsewhere in the city. I'm gonna pause there for a second. Do I have any questions? I know I'm just like throwing all sorts of information at you guys. I'm not seeing anything. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. Next slide. Um, so parks, trails and green space. Um, again, it's, it's one of those things I'm sure is no surprise. There's a lot of pride, um, in the parks in Richfield. And people definitely see that as one of the most important, um, amenities. Protection and investing in natural resources, they saw as an extremely important role, um, for the city. Parks are seen as one of the best things about which fields. And that they're really critical for quality of life. Um, they, uh, several of the groups, um, mentioned kind of different ways that the accessible and adaptive focus is important. And there were a couple of comments, again, in several other groups about a new park, um, that actually is more accessible um, for people of differing abilities and what a great, um, attribute that is for the community. What a, a great benefit that is for the community to be able to have that. Um, some of the other things that they've talked about, fenced playgrounds being a really important safety feature. Um, you know, especially young kids can be unpredictable. Um, and so that was something that they really saw as important. Um, and then sensory activities are a really important feature. And again, that came up in more than one focus group. Public safety. So overall, um, public safety, really everybody was, was pretty complimentary, um, really see the, uh, fire and police departments as doing a good job. Um, they do however, see, and I know this was discussed during the environmental scan, organizational profile, that they really do want to see increased diversity. Um, social worker, that is also seen as an important asset. And that came up again over several focus groups. It's really how important that folk, that group, that program has been, um, to have a social worker. Some of the suggestions, um, that they had was, um, maybe some additional training and things like mental health issues. Um, as the police chief mentioned earlier, um, a large number of their, um, you know, calls are now mental health. And so there was some concern, um, about that. And, um, you know, if whether or not there's training, because there is a recognition that the role of police has kind of changed for that. Supporting caregivers as well. A lot of times that there may be calls, particularly with people with mental health issues, um, where the supporting caregivers kind of feel like they are, they don't have a lot of control over the situation. Um, and so just having city staff figure out the best way to support those caregivers as they try to help their family members who have challenges. Um, and then there's just, um, some questions about response as the city builds up instead of out. Um, I know the fire chief did talk about this a little bit, just has some different needs for equipment. Um, but just understand that there are some different challenges as we go up. Um, and being able to do things in, you know, multi-story buildings versus ones that are one or two stories. Um, and then the need for more dialogue and transparency regarding race was mentioned several times. Um, I, there is, I, I think that overall there is a, their transparency came up a lot. Um, and one of the, the focus groups in particular, um, one of the people said, you know, here's what we are hearing. Um, we are hearing that sometimes, um, students at the high school of color are being treated differently or, you know, are being targeted or something. We just want to see the data. We just want to know. Um, and they do understand there's some privacy concerns around that as well, but that's really kind of what they want is they really wanted to see transparency around the data. So they had something to evaluate. Was this a, a perception? Was this truly an issue? How is it that we're going to be able to, to make sure that we can make some progress on that? And they really saw data as being one of the biggest ways to be able to do that. Any questions about? Okay, I'm gonna keep on going then. Public works, um, water sewer scene, this core services, again, drinking water, um, everybody in Richfield loves the drinking water. That came up, uh, in the focus groups as well as being one of the big attributes of, uh, of Richfield. Snow removal also, um, being better than other communities. Um, that also came up several times. And, um, public works is such, you know, they do understand what a, a challenge that is as well. Um, because there is so much and sometimes it comes down so fast and being able to keep all of that clear. And so, um, they really do appreciate the effort that is put into that. Um, and especially in this came through, um, several people in the disability focus group, um, really talked at length about this. How appreciative they were that changes in snow removal were based on input from that community. Um, they felt heard, they felt understood, um, and they really feel like it made a difference in their safety. Next slide, please. General city services, um, so updates to can, to technology with enhanced community accessibility, um, would help more people participate. It's one of those, um, it's one of those just challenges right now, and it's not a Richfield thing. It's just kind of a, a, a society thing. Um, if you want to talk to people who on Facebook, you're not going to hit the twenty-year-olds. Um, you know, trying to go through and really kind of navigate how to best reach out to people, be able to access them. And it's an ongoing issue and it's always a moving target. Um, and residents do understand that, but they also, um, you know, really hope that the city will continue, uh, to kind of chase that target so that they can understand as much as possible what's going on with the city and the ways that they can participate. Um, again, social media and promotion and communication, especially about community resources available. Like that was one of the things that was coming, um, through was sometimes there's programs that they don't necessarily know about. I had somebody who, um, described them as hidden gems. Um, but there's all of these great programs that the city is doing, and sometimes they just don't know about them. And so maybe, um, trying to spend a little bit of time highlighting some of those things around. Um, you know, I know that there's affordable housing programs and, um, some grants and some other things, um, that are out there that they told me about. I've also heard about, uh, during the environmental scan and just better understanding those. Um, permitting technology came through as a bit of a challenge. Um, that it is, um, they're really looking at that as something, uh, updating that technology is being something very important for the future. Being able to access it more online, um, and being able to kind of streamline that process. And then they want also said that the ability to renew license plates actually is an important benefit that they really appreciate, um, in which felt not having to go someplace else with being able to do those kinds of things in which felt was important. Next slide, please. Cost of living and housing. Um, and I decided to kind of put these two together, um, because honestly, I think that they're really pretty connected. And so did, um, as we were kind of having conversations, um, through the focus groups. They are really kind of seeing this disconnected as well, uh, being connected as well, because so many of the challenges that go along with affordable housing then also impact other things having to do with cost of living. Um, so there's some mixed feedback, um, about affordability. Some people said, you know what? I really feel like it's okay. But especially some of the people who are newer, um, we're seeing it. And certainly, um, it came through loud and clear out of the renters group that, um, they really see a gap, um, in being able to eventually move into home ownership. And that is something that they want to do. And also again, just that gap, because they don't have as much control over rent prices. Because somebody else is in control of that. So just that that can be a variable cost as well. The hor, hor, housing affordability gap is seen as having more of an impact on the historically marginalized and the disabled residents. Um, they really, um, are, are feeling that they're kind of, they're taking a lot of the burden, um, for that. And that is something, um, if I was to talk about something that I heard, um, kind of it as a real frustration, particularly from, um, some of the people of color that we talked to and, and also some of the disabled residents. I would say housing affordability was probably, um, one of the most things that they really felt like there was the most challenges with. Housing acquisition can be really difficult for those with bad credit or disabled residents who have a guardian. Um, that came through also as a, a bit of a challenge. Um, and then also understanding some of the cultural some things. We had one person who was talking about, um, you know, they were Muslim and it is more, it is not really consistent with their beliefs to do things like it alone. Um, so being creative in terms of, of, um, finding opportunities for Muslim families to be able to have home ownership with some of the, um, but also maintaining consistency with their religious beliefs. Um, and then housing for families also came through as a concern. Um, one of the people said, I can find one and two bedroom apartments all day long. I can't find anything that's got three plus bedrooms. So again, that was something else. And that was not necessarily a cost issue, but that was more of a, uh, a supply issue. Like the, the, at any cost, there just was not anything that was really suitable for families. Next slide, schools. Schools, interestingly enough, was, um, one of those that was, um, very mixed. I heard very different things, um, in different groups. Some groups said, oh, we're really kind of concerned about the school rankings. And I heard a couple of other groups that were like, no, we love the schools. It's why we're here. We feel like they really treat families well, like there really is a lot of good things. So there was kind of some mix, um, on the schools. Um, some of the things I did hear, um, pretty consistently, um, educational services, especially for Latino families, other families where English is a second language, um, is a real issue with a waiting list for the preschool head start, something like that. And they felt that especially with some of the barriers with already having English as a second language, not having access to those kinds of services for children early, really kind of just put them further behind. Um, mental health services, um, they said that there may be mental health services in the community, um, for students, but it's navigating it is really difficult. Um, and especially when you're talking about having teenagers and having a few in my house. Um, you know, having them kind of trying to navigate that and maybe some transparency and some communication about how to, um, navigate that better, going to not just the students, but also the families as well, would be helpful. Um, and then several people commented, again, a couple of different focus groups, that they felt like the relationship with the school district should and could be improved. Um, and that was really something that they were looking for from the city was to really take some steps to see, um, if they could do some additional collaboration, cooperation with the school district. Next slide, development. Um, this was another one that was interesting. Uh, the first one here, which field is seen as being very open to development conceptually. And yet sometimes in practice, it, um, I heard from a couple of different focus groups, that navigating some of that was a little bit more difficult. Um, and they weren't sure that if it was, um, they were really sure kind of where the disconnect was. Um, but, um, it kind of, you know, what way felt like kind of which, which felt is kind of said that they want. And then actually kind of putting that, you know, through and actually any, um, enacting in practice was a challenge. I heard multiple people talking about a grocery store on the east side. Um, and that that is something that is seen as a real need for the community, um, and also community center. And that was mentioned by, uh, participants in several different focus groups as a need, that they're really looking for something where you can have something from kids all the way through senior citizens, that they are able to come, gather, have programming available. Um, even just be able to walk when the weather is bad and exercise. Uh, but that they really see a community center or something that would be great for the community. Um, and then also a need for more culturally specific businesses and leveraging cultural resources. So again, that actually came up in several different focus groups, but specifically in the historically more marginalized group. They really saw that as a true need. Um, again, an interesting thing that came up in a couple of the groups was there's no venue for large events such as a wedding. Um, or even graduation parties or, or something like that. And they really see that as a need to be able to bring, uh, people together in the community. One of the themes that I just kind of heard through all this is that Richfield is a community of people who like to gather, who like to connect, who like to get to know each other. And so there really was this, um, this ongoing discussion about ways to do that, that you're kind of probably seeing through a lot of the things that I bring out, but particularly in this section here. Um, when we're talking about things like development, um, what I heard a couple of different times is they understand that there's going to be delays, but just some better communication, because they just don't know, like, is the project, is it, is it not gonna happen anymore? Is it just delayed? Um, especially when it's something that is going on, um, in, in the area, they kind of consider the, their, their neighborhood. They really want to know a little bit about what's going on. Um, and again, not necessarily a lot, but just, you know, some understanding. And again, not necessarily a lot, but just, you know, some understanding if it's a project that isn't going to go forward anymore or if it's just a slight delay. And then there was also some comments about residential developments with a mix of housing. Couple of different focus groups talked about the fact that affordable housing seems to be becoming more and more concentrated in just one area. And they really felt that one of the best things for Richfield was for it to be more spread out. And so as new development is being approved, truly make sure there is a mix of housing in there for people of all income levels. And also, and we'll get into this in a second too, but also accessible for people with disabilities. That that was that they really want to have, be able to have everybody, again, it's that connection of that community thing that came through. They really want to have everybody together. Next slide.
I'm just curious, do people say what area that was like, I just feel like the perspective and that could be different.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask.
Okay, okay.
I'm kind of, I'm mentally going through my notes, I don't recall.
No worries.
Okay. Diversity, equity, inclusion, we're literally woven into every conversation. I've done all sorts of focus groups, I have to tell you, this was absolutely fascinating to me. And I really enjoyed the experience. It really is something that is in the forefront for your residents as being a source of pride and one of the things that's the most important about the community. The diversity is overwhelmingly seen as an asset. And they, they understand that diversity in many facets and again, sometimes we start talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. People may just concentrate on one thing and they really want diversity, equity, inclusion across the board again. You know, differently able against, you know, with with able, you people of different races, ethnicities, age, income. They really see it as being advantage of Richfield that there is diversity in a lot of different facets. I will say however, that in several of the focus groups, it was very funny, there was one focus group where, you know, somebody started out and it was somebody who was white and said, oh, yeah, the great thing about which field is that you know, whenever we go someplace or he's always welcoming and you know, everybody and whatever. And a person of color said, actually, that's not everybody's experience. So they're really sometimes seem to be a little bit of a different in perception. And again, I was hearing that primarily around race and ethnicity. But Justin, again, I'm sure this probably comes as no surprise, but that did come out through the focus groups is that sometimes there's a little bit of a disconnect. For some of the residents regarding how connected they feel and sometimes they feel like they are less connected as a result of their race or ethnicity. Diversity in city and school staff, they see as being very important for the future and again, we've discussed that at length already. Navigating resources came up several times as being really difficult, especially for immigrant communities and communities of color. There's almost kind of this unspoken code of like how you get into it that they don't really understand. And so being able to really break that down in a way that accessibility, where to start the process is more clear. And making that messaging more inclusive of a lot of different kinds of communities to help people be able to access the resources that they need. Connections need to be built, particularly one of the things we talked about was immigrant communities and with people of color to start building trust. There was a couple of conversations about that there really, there really can be some trust and again, with some of you know, city staff, you know, just in general, just kind of as a group and again, kind of based, you know, not just on you know, anything necessarily with Richfield, but just things in Minnesota, things nationally, but just keeping those lines of communication open and really creating opportunities to connect is seen as something that's really important. And something that came through that was really interesting, I had one comment. That it would be a benefit of more city, city staff, particularly public safety lift enrichment. And what one woman said that just really stuck with me was if these are your neighbors and you don't go home to someplace else. That you may wind up looking at things a little bit differently and actually having city staff being part of the community. Rather than going to work there and then going back to someplace else, again, came up in a couple of the probably three of the focus groups. As something that they thought would really be a benefit. Next slide. And then this, oh yeah, please.
Just wanted a quick question that I don't know if that's information that's easy enough for us to connect through our HR department. But I think Richfield has a very high percentage of our staff probably compared to other cities, but maybe not of employees who are Richfield residents. Or grew up in Richfield, some type of Richfield connection, so that that could be something possibly we look into. But I think we have a lot of Richfield folks in our staff.
Excellent. And then.
Councilmember Trump, oh, I, I was just gonna jump, I just, I wanted to bring it up just along those lines with community outreach and barriers for, for Muslim residents too to access housing and financing. And we actually have some really great interest free, compliant products that pair really favorably with interest free, faith compliant loans. That are available, they're, they're zero payment forgivable or zero interest forgivable loans. But I think in, you just mentioned, and this is just maybe just a note to Melissa Palman and things to think about. We could talk about those loans in a really compelling way that I think would be just we kind of wouldn't necessarily be intuitive to folks.
Thanks, Councilmember, and you, you broke up, but I, I think that you were talking about advertising more that we already do these kinds of things. Did I get that right?
Oh yeah, sorry about that, not just advertising, but it's specifically to, to folks that have faith barriers to using interest, we have the CDBG money that goes towards interest free products, so we could probably talk about them and communicate them in ways and in communities to be aware of products that, that actually pair well. I don't know if I'm.
Right, and we, we have done Sharia compliant loans as well, so yep, we're familiar with those and I, I think, I think what this survey is telling me is that we have a lot of things to communicate because a lot of the things I'm saying in here aren't, aren't necessarily true. And so we, we just have to educate.
Yes, that absolutely, that was my point that we, we have those products already, so good, good work, thanks.
So I'm going to go ahead then and finish up with the business focus group. And I separated them out and the reason why is because again, we had these other groups, they're all really very similar and a lot of the themes were similar. And even if something was a little bit different with one focus group, again, it just kind of fit in with the overall, general conversations and then they have the business focus group. And they really, it really was a very distinct and separate conversation without so many of the same themes. And so I decided rather than kind of making that thematic, I really kind of wanted to pull out the business focus group and talk about this focus group specifically. Because their discussion, their priorities really were very different. So one of the things that they talked about was, and again, they realized the impact of COVID. But more events like the Fourth of July celebration, really opportunities to bring the community together in business areas. So that they have an opportunity to really see the businesses understand and the businesses get an opportunity to participate too. When they are able to get in front of people from Richfield and so that they know that they exist and they are there. They were extremely complimentary of police, fire and public works. When I say that everybody raved, I'm not, I am not exaggerating that even a little bit. They are very happy about the fact that when they do have a medical emergency, they do have a problem, they feel like people are there to help them out right away. Again, they talked at length about snow removal and what a great job Richfield does. And that those things really were crucial for the business community and how appreciative they were of the high quality of those services that they get in Richfield. There were however, some concerns that Richfield is not as business friendly as it could be and especially for new ideas. You know, some of the, the feedback that I heard from this group was that, you know, if it's, if it's something that is very, and actually I will say, I heard this also a little bit from the historically marginalized group. We had a little bit of a business conversation and there and well. And if it is something that is established that everybody kind of knows what it is. That everybody kind of understands the process, but if you're coming through with really a pretty novel business idea. That they didn't really necessarily feel like they were as receptive to understanding more about the business idea. Something else that came out of this was that the plan to be updated for today's market, they just felt that it was outdated with some of the expectations. Regarding zoning and some of the other things, Penn Avenue was also a big topic of conversation. And again, that was a little bit and then a couple of other focus groups, but that was a huge topic of conversation for this one. Because they really see that as being a barrier for new businesses coming to Richfield. So the things they talked about is if you come in and you see a whole bunch of vacant buildings, it doesn't look like there's anything going on. And while they do understand, I guess that there is, there's a owner or maybe a couple of owners that have got these vacant buildings that aren't necessarily doing anything with them. Like they, they understand the realities behind it, but they are still just concerned about the perception that vacant buildings doesn't look like Richfield is a thriving place for business. And they really want to be able to change that perception. And they also wanted to talk about housing needs being planned so that it doesn't compete with business needs. I guess that there was some mixed use developments that they didn't really feel like were appropriate with housing and yet they felt like kind of mirroring that with housing was the only way that it was going to get approved and they really wanted to have that looked at. Sometimes they felt like it needed to be separated out and not automatically put together. Next slide. So last thing I'm going to do, the last question I asked, let me stop there for a second, is there any questions? Because again, I'm throwing a whole bunch of information at you guys, I know that. Okay, so let's go to the last slide that what I did in the last slide and just ignore the asterisk, that was my own code to myself to know. That was something that came up multiple times as one of the three priorities. So there is no meaning to that other than that Corey forgot to erase them. So what this is, these are three priorities for Richfield. So again, kind of went through and put these into some buckets regarding staff and again, these focus groups were three priorities, they only got three. Not every game you threw, they only got three and these are some of the things that they came up. Again, policing in general and then recruitment of more diverse law enforcement personnel, community safety. Additional police training, especially regarding mental health, additional social workers, more diversity staff and then recruitment of city staff also came up as something that was a concern. Next slide please. Regarding development, improving the hub, that came up several times. Also creating and increasing the number and variety of restaurants, including higher end ones that came up a couple of different times is that there needs to be a little bit more variety in terms of the kinds of restaurants and the kinds of businesses. Again, a large meeting venue and the community center that came up and updating Penn Avenue, next slide. Housing, affordable housing for both rental and homeownership opportunities. And then accessible and affordable housing and I separated these, this out because something that came through loud and clear from the disability community, but also in a couple of their focus groups as well. If they had some ties to somebody who had mobility issues was that accessible and affordable aren't necessarily the same thing. And unfortunately, so many, many people who need accessible housing also needed to be affordable. And so again, looking at things like zero thresholds. Those types of things is really important for residents and then programs to move renters to homeownership. And again, it was kind of some talk about like they kind of knew that there, there were something, but I think that there were just a little cloudy on some of the details. Next slide. Youth, education, including opportunities for affordable preschool. Improving, I don't know how this one appear, proving accessibility for sidewalks and pedestrians safety. I think I put this here because a lot of the comments had to do with kids and having sidewalks next to roads and it being a safety issue. And then also again, people with mobility issues and even strollers and such. And then mental health services, especially for young people, especially as the pandemic just keeps on rolling. Their well concerns for young people in Richfields who really have had so much to deal with the last few years and how this is impacting them. Next slide. Infrastructure and parks, stability with the infrastructure, there's an understanding that there's, you know, a whole lot of things and it costs a whole lot of money. But that they're really important. Improving accessibility for sidewalks, pedestrians, safety, apparently I just put it in the wrong slide before. More trails for running and walking and then also parks, next slide please. And then other things, sustainability came through for several different people as one of their, their three priorities. Inclusivity came through and then also collaboration between the city, schools, businesses and the communities. And people phrased it sometimes a little bit differently, but that was kind of the general idea behind it, they really want to see more collaboration between these different groups and community, next slide please. And that's it guys. The fire hose of information comes to an end. Can I answer any questions? I was just awestruck with all the data, is that it? Trying to process it all.
I just want to clarify in time, we have three minutes left for this entire session, right? Is that correct, Katie? Okay. So maybe we can talk about next steps and in all of that as well.
Well, thank you for your presentation, I, you really got through a lot of data quickly, so I appreciate that. We have our retreats next week and so, you know, this was staff's chance to set the table with their data and information and assessment. And then also get the feedback from the community. Again, many thanks to the leadership team and manager Ruland and analyst Swanson, because I think they did a really great job and also to you. Corey, I appreciate it. I'm trying to find the exact dates and times, hold on, sorry. It's the 23rd and the 24th, so the 23rd is our first retreat and that's from four to seven. And then the next, the next retreat is that morning on the 24th from eight thirty to twelve thirty. And as of right now, we have them as in person, but we I, I just want to make sure that that we can accommodate that, so I will get back to you to confirm all of that.
Thank you, Katie, I'll just, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Ruelin.
I was just gonna, if we don't have it now, that's okay, but do we have a specific agenda? And are those two times distinct purposes or is that just, we expect it will, the first conversation will run over into the second time and that's by design?
I would have to have Craig get you an agenda, I have not seen one and Craig will be the one that's facilitating both of the retreats. Oh, Corey, Corey may have something.
I will say normally, they really are kind of separate because there are different activities. I can certainly talk to Craig and we can get you an, an agenda in advance.
Yes, if the sooner the better. The sooner the better would be appreciated since it is such a big topic and want to reflect on it some beforehand.
I don't know if this makes sense or not, but it might be helpful to just have some of the key takeaways on one sheet or something that we can have. I know that PowerPoint slides were sent to us, but it's really, I think the community survey information isn't too surprising. And I think there's a lot of stuff in there and definitely high expectations and in a lot of feedback. But just kind of so that I can have front and center the key takeaways from the presentation from staff and then community. And that something more digestible, just so that we can keep that front and center as we, and that we can reflect back on that as we continue our conversation. That might be helpful if it's not too much work, just to do a little more synthesis of some of the most important things.
Sure, Mayor, we can work on that for, for the next two meetings.
Councilmember Supple.
Can we also get the one slide from the community survey where the questions were cut off to know what they are, that would be helpful.
I will do that and again, my apologies on that, I will certainly forward that. Thank you.
All right, I see we're at time, any last comments or questions? A huge thank you to everybody, let's see, hold on, I just saw a text. Okay, excellent, a huge thank you to our staff and for the present and to Corey for the presentation for today. This is a great prep for next week and then thank you Katie for sending the information on the agenda so we can prepare for those two sessions. Thank you everyone, have a good night and thank you for the great presentation today.